World a better place for us all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David O'Bremell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim February twentieth through February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two as Engineers Week. And applaud the engineers working for and for the City of Warrenville for the significant contributions they make to enhance the quality of life for all Warrenville citizens by providing for their health, safety, and welfare. Well-deserved kudos for a fine profession that really does help us get our job done very well. Okay, on to the next part of our program, which is the next stage of our budget presentation for two thousand and twenty-three. We've had the Administration Department and we've had Public Works. This evening, we have a presentation from Community Development Department. And I will now turn it over to our Economic and Community Development Director, Ron Mensur. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening to the entire City Council and all those that may be joining us for this presentation on tonight's virtual meeting. I think I need somebody from Administration to give me the ability to share my screen.
Ron, we sent you up as a presenter. You should have the ability to do that.
Okay, all right, let me just make sure here. All right, made it happen. Wanted to begin this evening.
Please make sure that you're muted. We have quite a bit of background noise. It might be caller one or caller two. Both are in need of being muted, please. There's one. Thank you. Caller two, thank you. Appreciate that.
It was a little distracting. I don't think it would do well for my presentation this evening. So I did want to take this opportunity to start this year's presentation by pausing just to take a minute to express my sincere appreciation and thanks to the City Council for its continuous support of the Community Development Department and all the important work that the staff in the Community Development Department continue to perform on behalf of the community. There's no doubt without your consistent support, this presentation would be a lot shorter, might be a good thing, but it would be certainly a lot less interesting and certainly not as positive as I believe you'll find it to be this evening because we wouldn't be accomplishing most of the things that we're going to talk about during the presentation here. So the scope of my presentation, I hope to provide a relatively succinct overview of all the significant private development projects, community enhancement projects that are underway in the community at this point in time. And I want to talk about some of the more important, not necessarily always big thing, big projects, but important initiatives that the Community Development Department has worked to advance both this year and will work to advance next year from a customer service and community development perspective. Along the way, I definitely will be providing a lot of facts, figures, and information that I hope you'll find interesting and useful. I will definitely make a point of calling out the four decision packages that the Community Development Department has prepared and have, will be included, I believe, in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget that is ultimately distributed to the City Council next week. Proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget, that is. And then at the end, I, as always, will open up for questions and try to do my best to address the questions that the City Council has about any of the information I presented in my presentation or was included in the proposed draft work program for the community departments and fiscal two thousand and twenty-three that was included in the Agenda Backup Materials. I always like to generally begin these presentations by taking a look and sharing some important information about building permit activity in the community. Because in my career, it seems like building activity is a pretty good reflection of the overall economic health and economic vibrancy that's happening in the community at this given time when I give this presentation. This past, this current fiscal year has been another very busy year from a building permit activity standpoint. We're projecting that by the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, we will have issued seven hundred and seventy-five building permits. A hundred and seven of those building permits will involve the construction of new single-family attached and detached homes. In total, we're expecting that the total value of construction will issue permit for, permits for this current fiscal year will be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-eight million dollars. The city will collect about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth of permit-related revenue in conjunction with all the new permits that we are, have and will issue this current fiscal year. And by the end of this fiscal year, we're anticipating that we're going to conduct approximately two thousand building permit-related inspections. That number of inspections and that number of new single-family homes would be records for the city. We've never seen that level of inspection activity or new single-family home permit activity in any prior fiscal year that I could find in any of the city's historical records. Certainly that we've never come close to that number of single-family homes issued in any single fiscal year during my tenure in the City of Warrenville. Looking forward to fiscal twenty-three from a building permit activity standpoint, we've rubbed the crystal ball and intentionally made sure that we've been very conservative in our estimates looking forward. We certainly don't want to unnecessarily inflate the permit-related revenue projections that we filter into next year's budget and end up in a position where we're expecting a lot more revenue and committed to a lot of moving forward with certain expenses and not realize that revenue. So we're very, very confident that this coming fiscal year, the department will issue at least five hundred new building permits. Ten to twenty of those at least will be for new single-family homes. We'll see at least seventeen million dollars worth of new construction value permitted next fiscal year. And we should collect at least two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in permit-related revenue and conduct somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred permit-related inspections. Unless something crazy happens in the economy, worldwide economy, which you never know anymore, I fully expect that if that doesn't occur, that we'll far exceed these numbers based on what's going on today and the level of interest that we continue to receive from the private sector on investing in the City of Warrenville. Now, I want to give you a brief overview of the progress that's occurred in the community and some of the more significant development projects that either have been completed or are underway in the community this fiscal year, starting with the Erhert's redevelopment of the former city-owned Civic Center redevelopment site, site number one of the Musselman property. Erhert completed their project, redevelopment project this fiscal year. All twenty-seven homes have been built and they are now all occupied. And I'm happy to report that to the best of our knowledge, the city has completed all environmental remediation work for both onsite and offsite that's required as part of the redevelopment of this particular property. Another very significant project that was completed this current fiscal year in the Civic Center Tiff Three area of the community was the now-existing Warrenville Horizon Senior Housing Project at the northeast corner of Batavia and Butterfield Roads. Seventy-one unit mixed-income project that I feel fills an important housing need in the community in a very high-quality manner. There's a couple of important points I wanted to just call the City Council's attention to as part of tonight's presentation. The developer of that project made some commitments during the city's review and approval of the project that the developer has followed through and I think are worth noting here. Part of the review and approval process, they committed to voluntarily, at no cost, dedicate about a third of the property, about one point six acres of the property along the west bank of the DuPage River to the Forest Preserve District again at no charge. And that property has now become part of the Blackwell Forest Preserve District. That dedication was made and is complete. And then the other commitment they made during the review and approval process is they would thoroughly evaluate the feasibility on installing rooftop solar on the project. And that is something that they also followed through and completed. To the best of my knowledge, this is the first new build significant commercial project in the City of Warrenville that voluntarily has installed a fairly significant solar energy, solar panel array on the roof of their facility in the City of Warrenville. So a couple of positive follow-throughs by the developer that I think they deserve some kudos for. Jumping out to the southwest Tiff Number Four area of the community, the Lexington Trace Townhouse Project is very near to being completed at this point in time. About seven months ago, the developer of that project informed the city that they had sold out all the units in that project. The hundred and six units were approved in the project. They've all been sold. At this point in time, seventy-six of them have been fully constructed and are now occupied. The city has issued permits for all remaining units that have been approved in the project. And the developer expects to complete all the remaining units in that project and see the project fully constructed sometime this summer. A little further to the south on the other side of Route fifty-nine, but also in the southwest District Tiff Four is the Everton Project. M.I. Homes has continued to work on the build-out of their eighty-nine-unit townhouse project. Seventy-six units in that project have been sold to date. Sixty of those units have been fully constructed. Occupancy permits have been issued for. The developer of that project has represented that they fully expect that they'll acquire the few remaining building permits for the few units left in that project yet to be permitted before the end of this fiscal year and they'll complete the build-out and development of that project before the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Adjacent to the M.I. Homes Townhouse Project is the Everton Flats Apartment Project that was completed this current fiscal year by Atlantic Realty Partners. That project involved the construction of seven three-story apartment buildings, five multi-unit, single-story detached garage structures around the periphery of the project in a really pretty cool clubhouse pool complex that not only serves the needs of the apartment project, but also the needs of the adjacent townhouse project. The developer informed us that about a month after we issued the occupancy permit for the final apartment building in this project, the project was fully leased. That was a much quicker absorption than what they originally projected. And I think it speaks to the strength of the housing market in the City of Warrenville at this time. Jumping over to Cantera, specifically to the Cantera River View West Site, development site, which is located in a north Siah Ferry Road, just east of the DuPage River Corridor. The developer of the Review West Project completed the first phase of the project, which is the luxury apartment building that's marketed as the Arden Apartments. It's a three hundred and sixty-four luxury apartment building, four-story building that's wrapped around a internal parking garage. And as of the preparation of this presentation, the building is about eighty percent leased. And again, that's also happening quicker than what the developer had originally projected or anticipated. On the south side of the tollway, adjacent to the west side of the Cantera Theater Building, also in Cantera, construction is almost completed on the Cantera Wesleyan Apartment Project. During the zoning review and approval process, this project was referred to as the Vanguard Apartment Project. It's a two hundred and forty-two-unit, four-story luxury apartment building that's not built around a parking garage, but it's built adjacent to the parking garage. And there's a large internal courtyard that all the units are built around. It has a lot of amenities that go along with it, a really nice pool. That project is, the first phase of that building was issued its occupancy permit earlier this calendar year. Occupancy and leasing of that first phase is underway. The developer of the project is nearing the completion and should be securing the city's occupancy permit approval for the final two phases of the building before the end of this current fiscal year. And they expect that leasing activities will result in the completion and full occupancy of the building before the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Now taking a look at some of the, well, not some, four of the more significant private development projects that we expect to be either under construction or working through the city's development review and approval process in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, starting with the second, third phases of the Cantera River View West Project. Phase two has already received final PUD approvals from the City of Warrenville. It involves the construction of sixty built-to-rent three-story townhouses along the north and western edge of the River View West Site, kind of overlooking the DuPage River Corridor. These units would have integral third-story rooftop deck amenities. The developer for this, the component of the project, has submitted all the building permits for all sixty units. Those building permits are actively being reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department as we speak. Developer intends to begin construction on this project as soon as weather permits this spring and has stated that they anticipate that it will take them about eighteen months to build out all the units in this component of the River View West Project after they begin construction. The phase three component of the River View West Project, as it's currently envisioned, at least by the developer, involves the potential redevelopment of a portion of the, a significant portion of the existing parking lot that's located just east of the existing three hundred and sixty-four-unit apartment building. They would like to, they're anticipating submitting a preliminary and final PUD application for the redevelopment of that parking lot with a new five-story apartment building. It would be four stories of residential units built on top of an internal first-story, first-level parking garage. The project would have about, oops, a hundred units and would be a age-restricted project that would be focusing on adults fifty-five years and older. This would represent a pretty significant public, significant amendment to what's already been approved for the River View West Project. It would trigger the need to have a new public hearing process and whole variety of special approvals would be required in order for this project to actually be constructed. But the developer seems intent on going through the approval process to see if they can acquire those special approvals in order to build this project sometime in fiscal year, begin building it sometime in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Jumping back out to the southwest district in Tiff Number Four. Last Friday, we received a courtesy review application request from Lexington Homes. They've apparently put under contract five acres of vacant and underdeveloped land that are located adjacent to their existing Lexington Trace Townhouse Project under contract. And they are interested in developing what they're referring to as Unit Three and Unit, Unit Two and Unit Three to their Lexington Trace Project, which would be basically extensions of their existing townhouse project. And as its current vision, they'd be constructing, if approved, they would move forward with construction of another forty to fifty townhouse units would be similar in style and form to those that already exist in the project. Then at the very south end of Tiff Number Four, along the south side of Ferry Road, west of fifty-nine, on the only piece of property that's in the City of Warrenville, south of Ferry Road in that area of the community. The owner of the property is looking to move forward with and is actively preparing a preliminary and final PUD application that most likely will be submitted sometime early next fiscal year, late this fiscal year, early next fiscal year for a new hundred and two thousand square foot mixed-use building on the property. It's about a seven-acre piece of property. The front fifty thousand square feet of the building that's facing, would face Ferry Road would be built to accommodate the consolidation of three existing auto dealerships that Chicago Motor Cars has in the Chicago metropolitan area into one new modern state-of-the-art facility in Warrenville. If you're not familiar with Chicago Motor Cars, they are a auto dealership. It specializes in, I'm sorry about that, specializes in the sale of high-end, very expensive used sports cars and luxury cars. Some of the cars, if you Googled Chicago Motor Cars, look on their website, they have cars that are in the one and two million dollar range that they sell. So this would be their home base if this project moved forward. Now, I'd like to talk about four pretty significant, important community enhancement projects that we've spent a considerable amount of time and energy and city resources advancing in this current fiscal year and we expect to continue to be working on and advancing and trying to move forward next fiscal year, starting with the L.M.A. Prepath Trailhead Project. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussions at the City Council level about kind of the twists and turns of this project. I could probably have a whole presentation about where this project's been and where it's at today, but I'll cut it short and give you the high points. The project was completely redesigned this fiscal year based on some unexpected feedback and comments that we received from ComEd. ComEd has, ComEd and IDOT have reviewed and approved the redesigned project. The project is currently slated to be included on the March twenty-fifth IDOT BIT notice. We're hoping that we can secure and identify a little bit so that the project could be awarded to that firm and we can move forward with the construction of that project sometime very late summer or early fall of two thousand and twenty-two. One of the benefits that, unexpected benefits that we realized as a result of the delay of, that we realized, that we had to deal with because the project needed to be redesigned is it gave us an opportunity to pursue some additional grant funding that became available for these types of projects. Our senior civil engineer, Christine Hocking, worked closely with Public Works Director Phil Cookler, and they were able to secure another two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars worth of grant funding for the project. So at this point in time, we have secured a total of just over six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars worth of grant funding, which represents about seventy-five percent of the anticipated project construction cost for this particular enhancement project. Another important community enhancement project that, infrastructure improvement and community enhancement project that we've been quietly but diligently working on over this current fiscal year is to advance the preliminary engineering design documents for the future replacement of the McRoe Bridge and Trail Improvement Project. We've diligently been working through the very slow and cumbersome IDOT review and approval process for the preliminary engineering design for this project. I think we're on the cusp of receiving the IDOT's approval of those design documents in the next couple of weeks. And shortly after we receive that approval, we'll be back presenting to the City Council an update on the status of this project and seeking clear direction from the City Council on whether to move forward and develop the final engineering for the full project or just the bridge component of the project. And we expect then in fiscal year twenty-three to coordinate the completion of the final engineering design for whatever elements of the project the City Council determines we'll move forward with. We'll also be working over fiscal year twenty-three with IDOT to help coordinate necessary property acquisition, easement acquisition activities for, that would be required in order to construct the entire project or any component.
Excuse me, Ron. Ron, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, okay, caller number three is finally muted. Thank you. Go ahead, Ron. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Any component of this project, even just the replacement of the bridge, will trigger the need to acquire some public right-of-way, additional public right-of-way or right-of-way easements to actually implement. I think it's, let's see here, in the last, or the last, one of the last community, or the third community enhancement project that we have just started work on is the potential future construction of the preliminary engineering design work for the potential future construction of new ten-foot-wide hard-surface trails along both sides of the section of Route fifty-nine that extends from Batavia Road on the north down to Continental Drive and Meadow Avenue on the south. We've developed and included a couple of decision packages in the fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget that would allocate about ninety thousand dollars, well, not about, would allocate a budget ninety thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-three that would allow us to complete the preliminary engineering design work for this particular project and then a decision package for an additional thirty thousand dollars worth of funding that would allow us to begin final engineering design work for the project in fiscal twenty-three. The final engineering design work would be completed in fiscal year twenty-four. Just, I think it's important to recognize and note that at this point in time, we, the city has secured seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar service transportation program grant funding commitment for this particular improvement. And this is a area where we've had quite a few unfortunate pedestrian vehicle incidents, accidents over the years. So this seems like it would be a very valuable improvement from the community, a livability perspective. Another really important project that we've spent a considerable amount of time on this and resources, city resources on this current fiscal year advancing is moving forward with a variety of components that would help ultimately support a, some desirable redevelopment on the property we are commonly referring to as Old Town redevelopment site number two at some point in the future. We're anticipating hopefully some, a mix of some new public open space amenity improvements on the floodplain portion of these properties and then some desirable private improvements along the street front of the property. In fiscal twenty-two, as I've reported in the past, we have successfully obtained a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar no-interest partially forgivable loan from the IEP that will help pay for a lot of the site investigation, remediation, demolition-related costs that need to, will be incurred to kind of position this property for redevelopment. We also coordinated the demolition of the former gas station improvements on the property last fall. That project involved a pretty significant asbestos abatement component that was also completed successfully last fall. We continue to work through a site planning process that has had a couple of touchpoints with the community from a public input and information standpoint. the community from a public input and information standpoint to develop a preferred preliminary site plan recommendation, redevelopment plan recommendation that will be presented to the city council. Hopefully, we anticipate at the upcoming March Community Development Committee meeting. I'm sorry about that. For some reason, there must be a setting that this thing keeps advancing because I'm talking too long about a specific site, so I apologize about that. But we are hoping to culminate that preliminary, the development of that preliminary site, preferred site plan recommendation and present that to the council at the March upcoming March Community Development Committee meeting. We've continued to have an ongoing interaction with the L I E P leaking underground storage tank program regarding the open underground, leaking underground storage tank incidents that are still exist on the property that need to be closed out. As part of that ongoing interaction with the EPA, we have continued to conduct some additional site investigation activities on the property and collect additional data and provide additional reporting to the, the I E P all with the end goal of getting to the point where we understand what if any additional remediation activities need to be conducted on the site to address any remnant petroleum-related contamination on the property. And then just recently, we've initiated moving forward with a, with our environmental consultant's assistant, a a study that will look to better understand the concentration of iron in the soils, both on the, the former Sico property in, in, in that general area of the community when we were working through due diligence process before we bought the property, the gas station property, one of the things we identified is that the soils underneath the property have a relatively high level of iron content in them. Levels that generally the, the state considers above what would be considered normal in, in this area of Illinois. So we need to better understand if that, those high iron concentrations in the soil are tied to some contamination on the property, or is this just generally something that's found in the broader geographic area surrounding this property? The results of that study will help inform what if any type of remediation work we need to, to undertake in order to deal with the iron and ultimately obtain a comprehensive letter of no further remediation from the Illinois EPA remediation program. Looking forward to twenty twenty-three on this property, there's again a whole slew of things that we expect to have made a priority from a community development department standpoint to work forward on. We fully expect to have a clear understanding from the state of Illinois of what additional, if any, additional leaking underground storage tank remediation activities need to be conducted on the property. And if there are any, we fully expect to be in a position to move forward with implementing that cleanup project before the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We also are planning to work through all the processes necessary to understand and then design what type of remediation work would be necessary to address any other contaminants on the property that are not related to the petroleum in the leaking underground storage tank incidents. We don't expect that we would move forward with any actual physical work to address that until after we deal with the leaking underground storage tank work. So that cleanup work for non-petroleum-related stuff on the property, if there is any, would probably be occurring sometime in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We have developed a decision package that would include providing sixty thousand dollars' worth of funds that would be used to hire a civil engineering consultant that would prepare a detailed preliminary engineering plan that would be consistent in design with the preliminary site, preferred site redevelopment plan that we hope the city council will be endorsing in the coming couple of months. That preliminary engineering plan will help ensure that we confirm that it is technically feasible for the property to be redeveloped as envisioned on the preferred preliminary site plan and that we can also make sure that we coordinate our cleanup activities, environmental cleanup activities that, that is on the property in a manner that make sure that they are done in the most cost-effective way and allow the property to be redeveloped in a form that is consistent with the preferred redevelopment vision that is ultimately endorsed by the council. We fully expect and anticipate working closely with the city council, the public works department and the city's traffic engineering consultant to implement and then evaluate the operation of a new three-way stop condition at the Batavia Road and Warrenville Road intersection. Whether or not we, that three-way stop condition ends up being safe and desirable is important because that will have an impact on what if any type of on-street parking is ultimately potentially introduced along the Batavia Road frontage of the city's adjacent redevelopment site. And whether or not we're able to have on-street parking will definitely have a impact on what type of onsite redevelopment is actually feasible and attractive from the private sector standpoint. So we expect to move forward with that. We also expect to negotiate a land exchange agreement with the ownership of the Votel property. I should say land exchange and property improvement agreement with the ownership of the Votel property that would lay the foundation for the construction, future construction of a new shared access drive and parking area along the existing common property line that separates the Votel property from the adjacent city redevelopment site. And then finally, assuming we are able to prepare the detailed preliminary engineering design plan, we have a decision package for and we confirm that the city's redevelopment vision for the property is something that technically can be implemented. We anticipate having some discussion with the city council sometime in fiscal year twenty twenty-two about the possible preparation issuance of a request for proposal that would seek interest from individuals, businesses and developers that might be interested in moving forward with what I would term as the first phase of the redevelopment of the city's redevelopment site. And that would be the north end of the property that is not part of the old gas station site, so it doesn't have any environmental issues that are going to take us a little longer time to work through and clean up. Some of the other, I think, significant economic development, staffing and regulatory improvement, customer service items that we've worked forward on this fiscal year that I think are worth noting tonight are all the work that the community development staff has done to assist in the design and implementation of the city's new ERP system, specifically focusing on community development on the development of the basic city component, which will be the, kind of the digital backbone of all, that will support all the processes that occur in community development. That's been a, there's no real cool pictures to show on that, but it's been a long, drawn-out process and I can assure you that city staff continues to hold the consultant teams' feet to the fire to produce what they promised us when we entered into a contract with them. That work will continue into next fiscal year. You may recall that the city attorney, city staff, worked on the preparation of a series of city code amendments that were reviewed and approved by the city council last fall that created a new permit process that allows businesses like Evelyn Eve to now go through an annual permit process here forward to receive permits that will allow them to continue to have outdoor seating improvements on public rights of way on an annual basis. We are actively working closely with the city attorney and the environmental advisory commission to finalize an ordinance that would institute a ban on the use of coal tar-based asphalt sealing products in the city of Warrenville. That's expected to be presented to the city before, for city council review and approval before the end of this fiscal year. And last but not least, I wanted to acknowledge that over the course of this fiscal year, with great assistance from the administration department, we successfully recruited and filled four vacant positions in the community development department. Two of those positions were positions that existed prior to the beginning of this fiscal year. Two of those positions were created as a result of the city council's approval of the current fiscal year budget. We now have a new building inspector, a new planner, G I S technician. We also have, for the first time, a, a new half-time code enforcement officer that's doing good work in the community. I'll talk about that in just a minute. And then just most recently, we just filled the, the new assistant community development director position that the city council authorized being created and funded in this year's budget. In fact, I, I saw that Consuela Argellas is, was on the call here. She started today. Today is her first day as the new assistant community development director for the city of Warrenville. So welcome, Consuela. I am very glad that you're on board and look forward to working with you and doing some good work for the community going forward. Looking forward to, oh, I just wanted to, talking about the, the new part-time, half-time code enforcement officer. We hired a, an experienced code enforcement officer that had worked in municipal government for fifteen years or so and then retired from municipal government. He's now working part-time for the city of Warrenville. Mature, calm, clear, direct code enforcement officer. Very professional. He, his name is John Kumpak. He started working for the community back last July. Since he started, he has processed two hundred and two complaints, code enforcement cases, you might say. And his part-time work for the community up to this point in time, probably a few more, because when I prepared this presentation, he's done some additional work for us. Thirteen of those cases ended up having to be worked through the city's administrative adjudication process, which he did very professionally. And I wanted to especially call attention to two really difficult hoarding cases that he dealt with and successfully resolved in a very responsible, professional manner. Hoarding cases are some of the most difficult code enforcement cases that we deal with because they typically involve individuals that are either physically and or mentally just not capable of taking care of their, their home or their residence and dealing with the the, the, you know, the conditions that they're living in and then John solicited outside assistance from some not-for-profit agencies and was able to get those two hoarding cases cleaned up appropriately. So he did a lot of good work on those. And if you haven't already noticed, since the meal apart last summer, he's made it a conscious priority to keep the right of ways in the community clean of illegal temporary signs. That's not to say that they don't pop up on a regular basis, but at this point in time, they don't usually stay around for too long. If they do pop up, thanks to the, the work of John, I just wanted to highlight that. Looking forward into fiscal twenty-three, obviously, we're going to be spending, continue to spend a lot of time, energy and effort making sure the, the consultant team does what they're supposed to and finalizing the city's ERP work and completing the development of the basic city component of that proper project, including activating the citizen portal component. We anticipate that there will be at least a couple, maybe up to three long-term staff members in the community development department that will be retiring either in fiscal year twenty-three or maybe shortly after the end of fiscal twenty-three that we will probably need to recruit for during fiscal twenty-three. We expect to implement the enforcement and public outreach for the coal tar ban ordinance that we expect to be presented to and approved by the city council in the coming month or so. This next bullet point, you'll probably, probably say, yeah, I've seen that on Ron's presentations in the past. This is working with the city council to evaluate, make a decision on whether or not the city council feels it's important to move forward with the establishment of a new mandatory rental registration inspection program. This is something that has been on a work program for probably the last four, five, six years now. And every year, it seems like different circumstances arise and we just never find the time and resources to move forward and facilitate a informed decision on whether to move forward that project. But again, we're keeping that on our, we've carried that over as a priority in our work program for next fiscal year and we fully expect to be able to accomplish that unless something crazy happens like COVID or some other unforeseen condition. Our chief code official is looking to work with the city council on the adoption of updated building codes this coming fiscal year. We currently enforce two thousand sixteen building codes. There's new, now two thousand twenty-one building codes that he feels it's appropriate, would be valuable for the city to adopt and for the city to enforce moving forward. He's also planning to finalize a new updated intergovernmental agreement with the Warrenville Fire Protection District that would clarify the role and responsibilities the Warrenville Fire Protection has, district has in the review approval and inspection of new development and construction in the community. We're also planning to work closely with the environmental advisory commission to thoroughly evaluate the most current version of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Climate Action Plan and develop a comprehensive recommendation that would be presented to the city council on if and how the city city council should endorse or adopt all or parts of that climate action plan. One of the more important things that we're committed to moving forward in fiscal twenty-three from a financial perspective is to develop and submit a special census application to the United States Census Bureau. We can't do that until at least January of twenty twenty-three. But from our perspective, it's really important to make that application and work closely with the Census Bureau to conduct a special census of the area of the communities where we've experienced all of the new residential development because most of that development really had no residents when the twenty twenty census was conducted. So the, the new residents that currently live in those projects or will be taking occupancy in those projects in the next year or so weren't captured in the twenty twenty census, so we're not receiving any state share revenue each year for any of those residents and we could, you know, realize maybe an increase in total population of the community somewhere between fifteen hundred and maybe two thousand new people would be captured in the special census application process. It does cost money, would take time and energy, but we firmly believe that the, the upside financial benefits for the city would be significant and would be an ongoing benefit to the community once those new residents were captured by the census. The last initiative, community kind of enhancement initiative that we developed the decision package and included in the proposed fiscal year twenty-three budget that you'll be receiving is a sixty thousand dollar decision package that would provide funding to hire a specialty planning zoning consultant that would help the city work through a planning and public input process that would culminate in the preparation of a new zoning overlay district that would hopefully be adopted by the city council that would lay the groundwork and make it much more likely that the traditional style of mixed-use development and missing middle-type housing that's reflected on the slide here would, would happen in the city of Warrenville. This is the type of development that we're currently envisioning will be called for in the preliminary preferred redevelopment plan for Old Town Civic Center or for Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two. It's also the type of redevelopment that was called for in, throughout the Old Town Civic Center suburbia plan. But we haven't realized any of this type of development. It's usually small-scale development and the fact of the matter is that the structure of the city's existing zoning ordinance provisions actually prohibit this type of development from happening. So unless we take some steps to remedy that situation, we're most likely not going to see this type of development happening without a lot of city assistance and cooperation. a lot of city assistance and cooperation. So, that's one of the big initiatives we're looking forward to advance next year. Brings me to the end of my formal comments. I would like to just take this opportunity to recognize that all of the things that I've talked about in my presentation, all the good things that I've talked about in the presentation tonight wouldn't be possible without the dedication and hard work of a great group of professionals, professional staff members across City Hall. From my perspective, especially in the Community Development Department, I believe the city is really fortunate to have such a dedicated, hard-working group of professionals that really are committed to providing good service to the community. And I know from my perspective, both as the Community Development Director and as a long-term resident of the city of Warrenville, I feel very fortunate that these folks are doing such good work for the community. I wanted to take a minute to recognize that. So, with that, I would open it up for any questions and do my best to try to answer those.
Thank you so much, Ron. I continue to be in awe at the amount of quality projects your department, you and your department are able to accomplish and what you've accomplished in the last year, your plans for the coming year, all quality development that is going to make Warrenville a better place currently. And of course, in the future, will be appreciated by folks who are going to look back and say, I'm sure glad they did those things because they have made Warrenville a very special place. So, excellent job again this year. Consuelo, welcome to Warrenville. We're delighted to have you as a new part of our team. As you can see, you're going to be busy and you're going to be challenged doing a lot of good things that are going to positively impact a lot of lives, because that's what we try to do, not always successfully, but mostly. So, welcome. We're glad you're with us. At this point-
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking forward to it.
Excellent. At this point, we'll go to the aldermen and see if we have any questions and/or comments from them, beginning with Alderman Ashauer. Good evening, Alderman.
I don't have any questions. I just want to compliment you and your department on the excellent review and the forward look.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
I would also like to thank Ron and his department for just a very great presentation and all the wonderful things that they've done in the last year. It's pretty amazing what's happened here. I do have one question. When you spoke about the private development activity for FY 2023, you said Phase Two in the B T R townhomes. You mentioned that these were rental townhomes. Is that what that's supposed to be? I didn't understand that originally that there were to be rentals.
Yeah, they're what's referred to in real estate circles now as build-to-rent. So, they're designed and then built to specifically with the end purpose of renting out. And so, a couple of things that typically go along with built-to-rent projects, they're designed kind of bulletproof because they don't want to have to come back and start repairing things that were out because of just normal wear and tear in those projects. And in this project, all the residents that live in the project, in the units, would have access to all the amenities in the adjacent apartment project. As we understand that rents of the individual units in this project would be starting around $3,000 a month.
Okay. But I guess I just didn't understand that that's the way it was originally presented when the whole Arden Development or the Riverview West Development Project was starting. I thought it was supposed to be rentals and townhomes, meaning that the townhomes would be sold as townhomes.
As part of the, when the preliminary plans were approved, that's the way the developer presented the project. There were no conditions attached to the preliminary approvals that required the townhouses to be sold and occupied by owner occupants. And as part of the final P U D application process, the developer presented the project that it would be built for as a rental project. The city doesn't have any rules or regulations or core requirements that would have prohibited them from doing that. And as I remember, they did make it clear in their P U D applications and in the staff report for the project. We recognize that, and that's the way it was designed, and that's the way they intend to move forward with the construction of the project at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I just didn't catch that originally. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as usual, I am overwhelmed by what's happened here. There are several things, some of the questions that Alderman Berry had, that I didn't, this was new to me. So, this is even doubly exciting that we have so much going forward. I think, I just didn't expect that. So, really, I'm just sending congratulations to your whole group and to everybody. I know a lot of people are involved in these sorts of things. Also, unbelievable work on the grant funding. I always think it can't get better, and it always gets better. As an example, I didn't know the 50, I mean, I knew because we've talked about just recently in city council, but that the multi-use path along Route 59 in previous work plans and budget discussions, that was sort of down the road, is what I thought. And I know some of this has happened because there's been new funding available, but we've moved it up. I just think it's going to be such a safety issue and just so much easier for pedestrians to be traveling in that part of the city. So, I'm just, I'll probably go to bed smiling here because this is just really, it's so encouraging and so exciting. And the gas station is just, I never thought, it's happening faster than I thought. So, this is sort of wonderful. Anyway, thank you for all your work, your team. It's fun to be an alderman and over community development issues because it's just, you hardly ever have to say no too much, even though you read the whole thing. It's just so, these developments are handled so well that it's a testament to our city, really. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you, Alderman, for your support and for all the support of the rest of the city council. All this stuff wouldn't be happening without your support.
Thank you.
Alderman, we'll go on to Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I don't want to go wrong, but I would add my comments to Alderman Davalos and Alderman Berry in thanking Ron and his staff for all the very hard work on so many successful developments that have opened in this past year and that look so good in our community. I would just emphasize just a couple of things that you talked about. I'm really excited to see what you and the E A C come up with in reviewing the M N C Climate Action Plan. I think that's going to be a great project, and I'm interested to see what the recommendations are going to be about how we should move forward to implement that plan. I also am excited about the Route 59 multi-use path project, but I think we've talked about that enough recently, so I won't repeat anything that's been said. In terms of the Trailhead project, I think it is going to be going out for bid in just about a month. So, we might, we might see things really moving forward on that very soon, which is exciting. I attended a seminar today on electric vehicle charging grants and how the new build.gov website has so many different grant opportunities out there for people who want to incorporate electric vehicle charging infrastructure into projects. And I immediately thought, ooh, the Trailhead project would have been great for that. And now we're probably a little bit too late to apply for those grants as part of the initial building construction. But I could just picture electric vehicle charging during on the parking lot for trail users or library visitors. And I know that those funds are valuable. So, you know, I just, I think it's going to be an exciting project, may be able to expand it going forward in new and exciting ways for the community. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that project come to completion. Yes, that's all from me. Thank you very much, Ron.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Mensah, for putting together this report and all the hard work that you and your team has done over this past year. I'd like to call out one thing. It's important to note, you know, your ability to go out and discover and identify these needs and trends in the area. And clearly, as evidenced by, you know, the speed of permits and occupancies, I mean, that's tremendous that these, you know, come to fruition and don't just sit there. Obviously, there's a need for these things. So, great work there and really excited, looking forward to what's coming up next year and years ahead. So, thank you and great work.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kuckenberg.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep it very brief. I'd like to echo what all the other aldermen have already said. Great update, great work. I appreciate all this hard work, Ron, to you and your team, and just very excited for this coming year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Lockett.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. First off, I'm going to change my last name to an A. I didn't think that a Lockett would be at the end of the list here, but just to echo everything everyone else has said, and Ron, you, while I was on the plan commission, I mean, I was amazed by everything you guys were able to accomplish. Now, being a part of this next layer and seeing all the work that you have to put into this, I mean, it's amazing. I mean, it really is. And you guys breaking records with the permits, the inspections, continuing to grow, continuing to think about the future, what needs to happen. Middle housing is a new thing. It's a new word I know now from you, but it's goals and things that you guys are trying to accomplish to really push the city forward, which is amazing. So, I just want to say thanks and thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Jen. Or Alderman.
Okay. I would just like to go back to a point that Ron made and emphasize it again that here at the city of Warrenville, there aren't any silos that all of our different departments work together and cooperate at a level that's almost unprecedented. And that's one of the reasons that we have so much success, that Ron can always count on support from the other departments when he needs them, when he needs that support. And I would also add that the elected officials take a careful look at everything that's presented and make good decisions that support our professional staff that allow us to accomplish these things. So, I would like to thank all the elected officials for their hard work also. It is a team effort. If there's anything I've learned over the last 20-some years of being involved in municipal government, the most successful communities are those that can put together a good team that works together and it works in the same direction. And I think we do that in Warrenville, and Ron, you are one of the reasons we're able to do that. And someday, when you retire, you will be remembered fondly. I have to say that now, and I'm going to say that going forward. Keep in mind that what you do is greatly appreciated. It has a wonderful effect on the community. That's going to be a lasting effect. And I guess I don't want you to leave, but I know that time goes on. So, at some point, thanks for everything currently, though, and for the next couple of years, it really looks good.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. This is the time in the meeting that we set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person in person this evening that would like to make a comment, Mr. Bob Seibert. Bob, would you like to come to the podium?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. With President's Day being yesterday, I brought a book. It's published in 1865. It's 156 years old. The title is "The Life, Speeches, Public Service of Abraham Lincoln." It's written by individuals that were there with Abraham Lincoln. The actuality is that Abraham Lincoln wasn't the first. He was the second Abraham Lincoln. His great-grandfather was Abraham Lincoln and was in Pennsylvania, Puritan. Then, the family moved to Kentucky, Indiana, and then finally to Illinois. One of their friends back in Pennsylvania was Daniel Boone. In the book, on page 187, Abraham Lincoln gives us his philosophy on democracy. Abraham Lincoln states, "The people of the United States are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts." Mr. Lincoln believed that both the Congress and the Supreme Court could error, and it is the responsibility of the people to correct the errors. One of his examples in his book where he used complete logic was the Dred Scott decision. He believed in error by the Supreme Court, but he stated that we would have to follow this until it could be reevaluated. He also suggested that there is a necessity for a moral element in democracy. In the book, we also see Virginia was one of the four slave states where the general population voted not to leave the Union, but the politicians didn't follow the people's will and overturned the election. We seem to think always that it is the Lincoln-Douglas debates that are most important. However, Lincoln had many other, more important speeches and policies when he was required to speak in Ohio, Virginia, New York, the Carolinas, and Texas. The book illustrates the great knowledge and logic of a man that was self-taught. He actually had one year of formal education.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anyone on the line who wishes to make a comment tonight at the meeting? Please identify yourself and speak up. Okay, hearing none. Do we have any emails this evening with Mr. Erkocle?
No, we do not.
We do not. Okay. Then we'll close off this session that accommodates public comment and move on to official and staff comments. A couple of things. One, last Wednesday, I gave our State of the City address here at City Hall to a small audience, but it's available to everyone. It's on YouTube, and it's also on our Channel 10 so that you can watch it at your leisure. Went over a lot of things that Ron presented this evening, as well as many other things also, to let you know what's happened in Warrenville over the past year and some of the things we anticipate for the coming year. So, again, available on YouTube or Channel 10, 40 minutes or so of information about Warrenville, past year, and hopefully some good things coming in the future year. In terms of where we're at, in terms of wearing masks and what we're going to have to do going forward, that still remains somewhat murky, but I think Mr. Erkocle has some intentions that we have, given on the information that we have today. So, John, what have we got?
Thank you, Mayor. It is the, Mayor and I have been discussing this, and it is our intention that should the governor continue on the course that has been publicly announced, the actual information and notice, written information that we may get in a few days or about a week from now, that indoor masks are no longer required, it is our intent that we would begin to have meetings in person in March, starting in March. Now, given this pandemic, and stay tuned, because we were saying that in early December as well about January, and things turned a corner. So, the one thing we have learned is not to count on anything till we're actually there. But it is intent. I want to make sure the council's aware of that and the public. We would also continue with go-to meetings so that the public could attend remotely. It is a very efficient live streaming method, if you will, that we have found. So, we wouldn't change a lot of things, except the majority of the aldermen would be required to be in person, committee of the hall, et cetera. And we'll make sure that's clear when we send out those packets. And we'll make sure that's clear when we send out those packets and agendas and any other information as we know it, but that's where we're heading at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, John. Move on to the City Clerk. Good evening, Julie.
I have nothing.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to the Aldermen for comments, and again, we'll go through the list, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No comments, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
Well, Mayor, I have just one comment. I did catch your speech on Channel 10, and as tonight with community development, I actually learned some things I didn't know. And I would recommend it to anybody, because along with the mayor's humor, it's a very enjoyable, about an hour or so. So thank you very much, Mayor, for all your efforts. It was very informative talk.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
I want to wish everybody a happy President's Day and pass along a couple of compliments I've recently received. One was from a resident who greatly enjoyed the mayor's State of the City address on Wednesday and wanted me to let everyone know that. And one was yesterday, I spoke to some members of the League of Women Voters, and they all expressed their appreciation for the staff of the City of Warren. They said everyone here is always so efficient, and I just thought that was a wonderful compliment that I should pass along. Goodbye.
Thank you so much. Alderman Christel.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Kruckenberg.
I have no comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Alderman Lockett.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Okay. City Administrator, anything to add besides what we had earlier?
Just one quick note, if I may. My family and I have lived here for 23 years, and it is just always amazing when any family, anyone in town has issues, crisis or whatever, how supportive the community is, the residents, the neighbors, even coworkers and people at the city. And it's greatly appreciated, and it's not something we think about on a day-to-day basis, but it's a wonderful community to live in and be part of. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, Brooke. Good evening.
Good evening. I have no comments. Thanks.
All right, very good. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda this evening. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
This is Alderman Berry.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
Your turn, so.
Okay. Alderman Goodman, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I wanted to ask if we could remove item 6J from the current agenda.
6J? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, Alderman Berry.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the February 22nd, 2022 City Council regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, with the removal of item J?
I'm sorry, yes, with the removal of item J.
Okay.
I agree.
And second agrees to that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Lockett.
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda, as amended, has been approved for this evening. We have three sets of minutes that also need approval. Could I have a motion for that, please?
This is Alderman Davalos. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2022 City Council regular meeting, approve the minutes of the February 7th, 2022 City Council closed session meeting, and approve the minutes of the February 14th, 2022 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting.
Alderman Goodman, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, let's go ahead with the roll call, please.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman. Alderman Lockett.
Aye.
And Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. On to the consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02022-02 approving the purchase of an excavator from Atlas Bobcat LSC in the amount of $119,935 and authorizing the disposition of surplus personal property. B, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2022-03 approving a three-year agreement with five alarm fireworks for an Independence Day fireworks display on July 4th, 2022, 2023, and 2024 in the amount of $24,000 and authorizing Mayor Brummel to execute the agreement. C, accept senior civil engineer hockings recommendation and pass resolution R2022-04 approving the reduction of the public improvement security bond for the Lexington Trace project. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2022-05 approving the engineering agreement with Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for the preliminary Phase 1 engineering design of Route 59 Multi-Use Paths project in the amount of $104,833. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2022-06 approving change order number one to the FER-PAL Construction USA Incorporated contract for water main pipelining in the amount of $3,500. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2022-07 approving change order number one to the Benchmark Construction Company Incorporated contract for Lakeview Drive and River Oaks Drive storm sewer pipelining in the amount of $7,560. G, accept staff recommendation and approve the City of Warrenville fireworks and pyrotechnics permit for five alarm fireworks for an Independence Day fireworks display on July 4th, 2022. H, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize staff to advertise for bids for the CY 2022 Road Program project prior to formal approval of the FY 2023 budget. I, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve the designation of Aldermanic Liaisons as presented in the City Council Committees and Aldermanic Liaison Assignments list. K, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve the request to solicit and accept donations for the 16th Annual Bike Rodeo Event on May 21st, 2022. L, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and authorize the partial closure of Stafford Place for the annual bike rodeo event, as stated in management analysis, analyst, analysis? Analyst? I know I'd get it eventually. Analyst and BPAC Staff Liaison Young Myers February 9th, 2022 memo. M, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting held on January 11th, 2022. N, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on January 18th, 2022. O, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on February 20th, February 10th, 2022. P, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 16th, 2022 in the amount of Q, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before March 7th, 2022 in the amount of $196,457.74. And R, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of January 2022 in the amount of $16,552.31. May I have a motion approved as read?
This is Alderman Berry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by Mayor Brummel.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have multiple seconds. Take your choice, Clerk. We have motion and a second. May I have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Lockett.
Aye.
Alderman Christel.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Motion carries, and the consent agenda, as amended, has been approved for this evening. We will remove, return to item 6J. Alderman Goodman, would you like to make that motion, or would you prefer that someone else do it?
Someone else, please.
Okay, would someone make that motion then, please, so we can move on?
This is Alderman Davalos. I'd like to move to accept Public Work and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to proceed with recruitment for the positions of street division worker and water utility worker in the Public Works Department with an anticipated start date of May 2022.
Second, Alderman Christel.
Okay, motion and a second discussion. Alderman Goodman, we'll give you the first chance.
Thank you. For those of us who are new, I want to remind us that when this department expansion was presented originally, it was presented in phases and with the following caveats, that the first few phases would not involve an increase in staff, and that when the time came to add the two new positions on tonight's agenda, we as a council would first consider the cost and the city's financial condition. We were having this discussion early in the pandemic, and things were very unclear. However, tonight's staff is saying that they'd prefer to skip that step, that they think it's okay. But with all due respect, it's my job as an Alderman not to skip that step. The elected officials weigh the full financial picture before committing to large, long-term costs like those involved in adding staff. I want you to keep this decision in mind the next time that we have to discuss rate increases for the water and sewer service, because this cost is part of that bigger picture. And as I've seen the numbers crunch, especially for the water and sewer fund, we are still looking at near-term, significant, ongoing, maybe even annual rate increases to pay the million upcoming costs in that fund. Now, the rescue plan money should help us somewhere, but since receiving that allocation, we have not looked at the numbers again as a council or even at the EMRP work group. Now, once we have that full picture, staff may be right, this may be a fine move, we'll see that in a short time. We're going to be talking about the budget very soon. But the longer-term condition of the enterprise fund makes me concerned right now about making the decision on that hire particularly. I can't justify making this decision now without that bigger picture. The decision package is the right time to vote on this, not now.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. We'll give everyone else a chance to chime in if they would like. Going down the list, Alderman Christel, you can go first, please.
Yeah, I think, as mentioned previously, I mean, this process takes a significant amount of time, and the ask is to, you know, begin this recruitment process, which could take many months, and depending on the amount of potential candidates, it could take even longer. So, you know, at that time, if we take a financial look at, you know, budgets, fund balances, and at that time, we say, you know, that we can't move forward with that, I think at that time, we could pull back at that point. But to get this process started, I think that we need to, you know, get this process started as soon as possible. So I am in support of this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I think I'm in favor of this also. I think finding someone earlier rather than later is probably better, and I think the process is going to take a while. I don't think we're going to hire someone within a week. So while I can appreciate the fiscal responsibility that we have, we're not, I think we have time to make that decision yet, where, you know, we're not hiring someone right away. So I think we could at least start the process right now.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Lockett?
I agree with the two previous Aldermen. I think if we start it now, the more exposure you have out there, the better chance you have to get better candidates, and by the time the decision is made or they're looking to hire, we should know our answers. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
We went through the process of changing the way the department was structured, and it requires replacement of two of the front-line workers, which this motion actually facilitates. I've been, I've had concerns about staffing in the past, but these are the guys that are out piling the snow and fixing the main brakes. So I think that having them is important.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
I also agree with most of what all the other Aldermen have stated. I know even working in my own company right now, trying to find qualified applicants, candidates, is almost impossible nowadays. So this is going to be a long process, and I'm sure it's going to take more than several months. We have candidates at work that we've been looking for for over nine to 12 months already, and we can't find, we just can't find people. So this is something that's not going to happen overnight. And if the budget is completed and it looks like we don't have the money, we still have the ability to say, stop the process. So I'm in favor, as of right now, to go forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think what Alderman Berry said about the right time is appropriate. I mean, this is a decision, we're voting on the ability to a decision package. We're not, and I know we're voting to hire, but I agree that it's going to take a while, and that we will have a lot of time to discuss this, these decision packages, in the meeting in March. So I think we do need to start now, because of what Alderman Berry was saying. Number two, this is going to be the reality. If you look at Director Menzger's report tonight, we have a lot more streets and water lines and sewer lines and work that the Public Works Department does. And I think I've, many of you probably have thought the same thing from the beginning several years ago, when we started these projects and we got the TIF for in, and we're going to have to hire, I don't know what the number is, but there's going to have to be new hiring in some of our departments. And we won't know that now, and I think we just have to listen to the city departments that are involved, police included, to see what's going to happen. But I think this is along those lines for me, is that I think we're probably going to need this, although I am listening carefully to what Alderman Goodman is saying because of the ERP. So that's what, it's going to be up to this group here to figure all that out. But I don't think it's unrealistic to think that we're going to need to hire those people, and we're going to have, we'll be talking about it in decision packages. So I think it's okay to start it now, is what the bottom line of what I'm thinking. I don't think, it'll be, it would be a miracle if it got hired by March 12th. Someone got hired by March 12th, which is when our meeting is. So I think, I would be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Everyone's had a chance to speak on this. Does anyone wish a second bite at the apple before we take the vote? Okay, everyone's good. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Christel?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. We have nothing listed under the regular agenda, no unfinished business that needs to be followed up on this evening, no new- No new business in front of the council this evening. No need for a closed session. But we do have the need for one final motion this evening. Who would like to do that for us? That would be the motion to adjourn.
Okay, Alderman Davalos. I was going to give someone else a chance, but Alderman Davalos would like to move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second, Alderman Kruckenberg.
Thank you both. The final roll call for this evening, please, Julie.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Lockett.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
And Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your attention and attendance this evening, and we'll see you next time around.
Thanks, Mayor.
May they all.
Nice.
This concludes. Bye, everybody.